I'd like to call the meeting of the West Dakota Water Development District into order, and I would like to start with the first item on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd like to stay standing, not seated, Director Byalata, will you give the invocation tonight?
Sure. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the people attending. Weather's starting to get a little bit cool and a little rainy, so everybody drive home safe in these slip conditions. Pray that everybody can have cool heads and a good conversation. Amen.
Mr. Malali, may you do the rolls.
Code, Gierke, Driscoll.
Here.
Jovick.
Here.
Brolinger. Williams.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Byalata.
Here.
Harris. We have a quorum, and five people, three is a majority vote, four is a two-thirds vote.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We can't take official action until any of the items are not on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to add an item.
Okay.
It's related to 11.
Okay.
I'd like to add a discussion about conflict of interest by Director Driscoll. So I'll make a motion to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the addition? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to add a 11B, a discussion about Director Driscoll's conflict of interest with item 11, the update on opportunities for collaboration on storm water management and mitigation.
I didn't say it was related to that.
So are you requesting to put an item 12 then?
That's fine. Could be a separate item.
Okay.
I would suggest, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that probably it should follow number 12, do all of our other business first, the regular business, before we get comments by folks.
That's fine, too.
Is it an action item for a vote?
Mine will be before a vote, yes.
Okay, but it's gotta be before a public comment.
I would question how we can be voting on that when it wasn't on the agenda before.
Because we're adding it to the agenda right now.
Good.
So what is the intent of the conflict of interest, Mr. Jovick?
The intent is to have a discussion about the general conflict of interest that's been exhibited by Director Driscoll over the last several months that he's been a director, various activities he's been involved in, and trying to drum up business for the very agency that he works for. For me, from my perspective, that seems like a conflict of interest that is as clear as it gets.
So how is it a conflict of interest to the South Dakota Code? Because Director Driscoll, do you want to, if I ask you a question?
Well, we can't discuss.
We're adding things to the, I want to have a discussion on this at the appropriate time. If you'd like to do it now, that's fine.
We can add it as number 12 if that's what you would like to.
That's fine.
Okay.
So which is it?
For my purpose, could you word that how you want to word it, if you're gonna, if it's an action?
The agenda item will be discussion on potential action dealing with conflict of
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor of approval of the agenda with the addition, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Agenda is passed with the addition. Item number five, conflict of interest disclosure.
I'll have a conflict with number eight.
Okay.
And I'll point out to the board that I've got another engagement this evening and have to depart early.
Okay. Mr. Byalata, you had your hand up.
Ten.
Ten?
Even though we won't be voting on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question for you?
Yes.
What happens if we're down to four?
Then we cannot take any actionable items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to change our, the order of our business then, based on this new information.
We have approved the agenda as is, and we will continue with the agenda as is.
So we didn't have the information from Director Driscoll earlier that he would be leaving earlier?
We have approved the agenda as is, and we are going to continue with the agenda as is.
That's not really, typically if you start a meeting, then you finish it. You don't end a meeting early. I've never been to a meeting that's canceled early because one director steps out on any council board or any such.
I'm keeping the agenda as is, as approved.
I'm aware of nothing in the bylaws regarding that. It's United States of America, and it's our prerogative. There's nothing prohibitive in our bylaws.
Okay, item number six, approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I think we better pause and look up Robert's Rules, please.
Yeah, I had your, I'm trying to find it here. Sorry about that, I should've gotten this ready. So, if I may?
Yeah, bring it up.
Page six.
I'd ask if you could.
So the first one, you were suggesting kind of a formatting issue, however, all my motions are put, i.e. in that, that's why that's intended.
Oh, it looks kind of out of place that it's, looks as a sub item within.
Yeah, that's kind of an unintended, I can probably clean that up a little bit. These are just bullets for that. Yeah, so every time I have a motion, I pull it back, so people can kind of pull those out, and your other one, I'm fine. You said this level of detail is unnecessary, so.
That's my suggestion, is we can live without those details. I would move to approve with those changes.
Do you have any other new ones?
There is currently a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a second?
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Seconded. Byalata, discussion, discussion. All those in favors of the, to approve the amended meeting minutes from last month's meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Item number seven, the treasurer's report. Mr. Malali, would you like to do that?
Certainly. We're currently in our, totally in our accounts, wait, how, totally in our, total amount in our accounts is about 492,000. That's in our checking and savings account. And to keep things short here, admin budget to date, we spent 52,000, remaining 37,000. Project budget is 316,000, however, we've only spent 54,000, so have quite a bit remaining in the budget, whatever. That really doesn't mean too much, better than indicating we plan on more. Total expenditures to date is about 104,000. And if there are no questions, I'll move on to just our project summary where we're at.
Dan, Director Williams has a question.
Oh, it'd be in your projects, anyway. Last meeting, we had a 5,000, was it last meeting, the week, meeting before, $5,000 grant to help a lady in, what was it?
Johnson Siding.
Johnson Siding.
For the subject bank.
Later I heard that there was some issues with the.
Yeah, I can go into that now if you want. I had planned on that under admin comments, but if you want, I can run through that.
Does it show up on our, on the figure schedule?
It doesn't show up as a project because it wasn't budgeted. It hasn't happened yet, and it was pro, and there was no budget line item for the wastewater treatment, so the intent was to put it under the contingency, but since that hasn't been dispersed yet, I haven't put it on here. But you're correct, we do have a potential obligation of $5,000.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question in regard to that.
Okay.
How long are we going to keep that open before we decide that we shouldn't pay it or it should come off the books? I mean, is this a, is this a never-ending obligation that we have until they get their poop in a group here?
I would defer to Dan.
There's nothing in the rules that say there's a time limit. The only thing that might happen is if our contractor, if that didn't work out, the contractor, you guys based your vote on that bid, if that didn't turn out to be who she was using, then it might have to be redone.
So technically, if this never happened, this could be on the books in perpetuity?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Chairman Jovick?
Yep.
I suppose eventually the board could maybe rescind their grant if it's not used. That'd be my only thought.
I think the lesson learned there is that we need to put time limits on these things, or some kind of stipulation.
That would be probably just blocking the policies.
Or in the motion to fund it.
Yeah.
I'd put that as a no. We can probably discuss that probably later date.
Okay, should I keep going here?
Yes.
This is just a summary of all the projects. We did get invoiced for the stream gauges, however, it's not due till the end of October, so I haven't paid that yet, but that will be $11,000 approximately. So the, with that, as a unpaid obligation, we have about 39,000 in dividends out there for this year for projects. And the, just since we're talking about Missouri River allotment, they have, looks like about $15,600 yet to bill on that. Does that sound right?
Well, I think we spent a lot of that, it's probably just delaying our bookkeeping.
So if there are no questions, that's all I have.
Okay. Motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second.
Driscoll, and seconded by Williams, all in favor of the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we table items eight, nine, 10, 11, until we have the discussion about conflict of interest by Director Driscoll, and we can come back to eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Okay, so how does that go with eight, plenty of the USGS King Lake sampling?
They're being tabled.
So my question is, is Director Williams, item eight is yours, and that is the next item on the agenda, so would you?
I'm okay with that.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to move item to table eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Motion to call the vote.
It's entirely out of order to rearrange the agenda.
Question's been called.
Okay, a call for the question to table eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Move 13, the conflict of interest discussion that Mr. Jovick would like to the front part of the meeting, and the question has been called. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. That does not have a two-thirds vote, so the question cannot be called and discussion Is there any discussion from the floor?
I have a question. Could I get the exact wording on that motion?
The exact wording is the table eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
That's kind of ambiguous with this table usually.
Table means usually to kill it, but that's the motion on the, on the floor that has been seconded.
My motion was to come back to those after we had the discussion about the.
So are you requesting to postpone?
That's fine. If we want to call it a postponement, that's fine.
Does the second approve the?
Second approves.
So right now, there is discussion about postponing eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 until new item 13, Director Jovick's concern of conflict of interest, a Director Driscoll is discussed. This is open for discussion as of now.
Seems to be none.
Okay, there is no discussion on the proposed motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
As discussed, I have another engagement.
If you leave, I'm going to call the Attorney General tomorrow and have them.
And move this to censured and suspended.
I welcome that. You can do anything you want to the United States of America.
I move to censor and suspend.
You think that you can.
Director Driscoll, while he's here, right now.
Second.
It's been a meeting. Call a question.
Be all later.
We do not have a full quorum.
We did.
He's out of the room, there's not a full quorum. No actions can be made.
Please pull up Robert's Rules to verify. I believe once the director leaves, it's allowed.
I believe the chairman is correct.
We've got Mr. Jasper in the room, can you weigh in on this?
Robert's Rules is not an easy thing to advocate.
No.
Oh, I'm not counsel.
Yeah, I know you're not counsel, but I know you're, you've been a resource for us.
I'm a public speaker.
All right, well, like I said, I guess my plan as a director is going to be to call the Attorney General, or whoever, and begin some kind of investigation. I think this was highly inappropriate. Director Driscoll obviously left in order to avoid some kind of issue that is associated with his conflict of interest, so. At that point, I don't know that without a quorum, we can.
Says here, the quorum refers to the number present. The quorum of a mass meeting is the number present at the time.
Okay, so we were able to start the meeting with the quorum.
But that can, that can change throughout the meeting. If somebody's late, you could, for example, you could start without a quorum, then when you had a quorum, you could transact business, so basically, it's a snapshot of the members present at that particular time.
So the meeting, the meeting's complete?
Hold on. To finish a meeting is different.
So the, it doesn't mean you have to stop meeting, it's just meeting.
We can't vote on anything. So School of Mines.
We can't even vote to close the meeting.
I can as the chairman of the close meeting. So I believe since School of Mines is here, we should let them present, is my personal opinion, because we're not making any actual items, and they were kind enough to show up.
Zero persistent.
So since we can't stop number eight, that can be struck. Since Mr. Driscoll's here, number 11 is mute, can't vote on 12, and number 10 is a discussion, but can't be voted on, which as Mr. Byalata stated. So as the director, moving to number nine, if that is all right with the remaining contingent of the board?
No, we think we should discuss number 13 while we're on it.
Number nine is the next item on the agenda.
Right, but since we're on 13, we are on 13 before somebody stepped out, that's where we should leave off.
I believe the School of Mines is here, and Dr. Katzman, do you have a, another engagement that you were stepping?
Just, I'm seeing my kids, but I was like, you know, I see the other kids.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no votes can be taken, so there's no point.
Okay, number.
Can't. There's no sense.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. We're not going to hear 13.
Okay, on the floor now, there has been a motion to adjourn the meeting without any comments from the public. Is there a second?
Well, we can hear public comment.
No.
I'll adjust my motion to hear public comment and adjourn, since we cannot take any action on anything else.
Okay. Motion is to take public comment and then adjourn the meeting. And it's seconded by Williams, even though we can't really vote on a thing because we do not have a quorum. Is there any public comment?
We can action the meeting. That's allowed under Robert's Rules. That's it. We can.
My name is Mark Anderson, under the public. I would just comment from my personal cut of hair. Could I ask you to stand by the microphone? Thank you.
Kind of a legal thing.
I would just, would like to comment on this issue of conflict of interest. And what I would say, in my professional experience of having been on the City Council of Rapid City and served on many boards, a conflict of interest has to result in personal benefit. If some action of the board results in funding to an agency, that isn't necessarily a personal benefit to Director Driscoll. So I think the acid test for a conflict of interest means you personally benefit by that, typically financially.
Thank you.
Glenda Williams, and I'm also just a citizen. Conflict of interest, I work for a trade association in Washington, DC, and just because I may not get a personal benefit from anything I do with the government of the United States or any other foreign government that I work with, certain things that I do, even though it doesn't benefit me in my pocketbook, benefits my association. So conflict of interest goes beyond a single person's benefiting monetarily. And I know that in most larger corporations, they define conflict of interest very carefully, and maybe it's something if the board, Water Board doesn't have, they might want to get that, because I think it would maybe prevent people from running out when they're being challenged for conflict of interest. If there's a definite definition, that might be of help.
The board runs off of South Dakota law 1-25-1, and.
Is that conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest, and it's what Mr. Anderson said, that it has to be personal financial benefit. Now.
He's employed by him, that's the personal.
An employee of an organization benefits from what the organization does.
He's employed, it's paycheck, that's personal.
And I think you'd have to have that interpreted probably by a lawyer, but I'm just going by experience and working in a DC atmosphere.
I'm just going by, off of the, that's why.
He collects a paycheck, that is personal.
If he's being paid by USGS, then what he does is on behalf of USGS, and there probably is a conflict of interest defining it, maybe he doesn't believe that, but I also feel it's kind of sad that he wouldn't defend that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? See, none. Does the board want to listen to South Dakota School of Mines' presentation?
I would.
You would? Okay. Would you guys like to present tonight?
A little more.
There was a, there was a motion in pass prior to this, you can't go on without.
But technically, the motion, since we do not have a quorum.
Actually, if you look up the Robert's Rules, actionable about the meeting is actionable.
Okay.
We cannot vote on a particular matter except for meeting matters, and it was passed and voted on.
Okay. So according to Mr. Byalata, the meeting is adjourned, but the School of Mines would like to present, I would gladly sit through it.
Bye.
Okay. Okay.
That'll be yours, Will.
I'd like to hear it, too.
Alright, so, 18:30.
Considered practice speech.
This is the shortest meeting in history.
I know.
So, if you don't mind, I'll leave it in this moment.
Whatever you prefer.
So, if it doesn't lock up.
Yep, no problem. So, my name's Kurt Katzenstein, I'm an associate professor here at the South Dakota School of Mines. This is an ongoing project that we've come and, we've updated you guys a few times on what's going on. We asked for, and we're granted an extension this summer. So now, the end date of the project is the end of November. We have some, a little bit of remaining salary to keep one of our students on to help us out this fall until the end of the project. So, in relation to your discussion before about the budget, most of that's been spent, there's only a couple thousand dollars left, I think, this year. So, a lot of this you've seen before, so I'll go through this quickly here in the beginning, there's a few new things to talk about. So, our team here, I took over this project when Dr. Wismy passed away about a year ago. And Scott Kenner over in Civil Engineering is part of the team. Dr. Davis, your Art Davis, is here at the meeting tonight, he's retired from our department in Geological Engineering. Mark Anderson's been kind enough to help us with a lot of the aspects of our project as we've been progressing through.
Could I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Just for a second. Mr. Anderson, what's your background? Are you an engineer?
Master's degree in civil engineering.
Okay, good, thank you.
Undergraduate degree in engineering.
Okay, thanks.
And originally, we were going to try to find a master student in civil engineering to do the work for this project. There was not a suitable one found, so instead, we hired three undergraduates to complete the work that we oversaw. Caleb is the one that's the civil engineer, he's still helping us finish the project, because most of the work that's being done currently involves civil engineering considerations. And the two geological engineering students, Breeden West and Haley Noda, whom they are now... Still, we're still consulting with them, but by and large, they're through with the project. Go ahead, next slide, please. So, you guys all know that there's a future use permit that's been maintained by this board since the mid-'70s for a fee. And that future use permit allows for the allotment of up to 10,000 acre feet a year of Missouri River water. It's never been actioned upon, but it's been maintained, and so, one of the impetuses for this work was, is it worthwhile to continue to maintain this permit? And so, it's one of the questions we're hoping to ask here. Rapid City also holds a similar permit, much larger volume, and they've maintained it since roughly the same time. In fact, the next slide shows that these were both started roughly the same time in the mid-'70s. So, that's the list, and this is one of those things, first in line, first in time, first in line situation, so it's, if you're on top of this list, that's a good thing. If there's ever any kind of a discussion over priority for these future use permits, is there?
I was looking at this earlier, West River Water, you know who that is?
Do not. That's a good question.
Does anybody in the room know who West River Water is?
Yeah, it's one of our rural pipelines.
Good, so it's a rural water district?
I was thinking it was a water district.
Yeah.
The West River Water District, yeah.
No, I think they participate in...
Rural Water District.
Water District.
Are they still going concern, are they still around?
Yeah.
Good. Good.
I don't know if they're allowed.
Good. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine, go ahead. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned before, one of the objectives of the project was to decide whether or not this permit is worth maintaining, and to do that, we want to try to be predictive as to what's gonna happen here in this region in terms of growth, because obviously, that'll have a big bearing on future water demand. So, the first step in our project was to do some population projections, and then try to tie that to what we think future water demand might be, using existing relationships between population and per capita water use. And then, the second main prong of this was to try to look at literature, existing literature, and come up with what we think is a amount of water use and supply that's out there that we can utilize without negatively impacting long-term sustainability of those sources. And then, the third thing was to look into options, if it's decided that this water needs to be brought to western South Dakota, what are some of the challenges, some of the preliminary design considerations for that type of project, and so forth. So, we'll talk about each of these here individually, so we'll start with number one here. So, population projections are challenging and difficult, so we made several assumptions. We also took advantage of some population projections that the city has done for their economic sustainability plan here, an outlook for the city. And we compared those, and we came up with what we thought was a representative projection of population that we could then draw demand, future demand from, based on an assumption of about 150 gallons per day. That number stemmed from a report that we'll be citing several times here, that's one that was done by Long and Putnam in 2002, that looked into water use and water supply in the Minnalausa-Madison Aquifers here in Rapid City during both drought and wet and average periods. So, those projections, go to the next one, those projections are on this next slide here. So, the black solid line is historic population in Rapid City, from US Census data. And then, there's the colored dotted lines there represent multiple different assumptions that we went through. The red dotted line is a use of a growth curve applied to the historic population data. The blue dotted line that kind of is offset a bit there, that's just a linear trend on the existing data. The green dotted line, that's the population projection that the city provided us. The yellow dotted line is just simply a polynomial fit to the existing data, and the purple one, which is the highest one there, that's us comparing the historic percentage change in Rapid City to historic percentage change in Minnehaha County to try to say, okay, these are both South Dakota locations, they're probably gonna behave similarly, although I would say that that one probably has the least amount of confidence. And then, we took an average of all of those, and that's the solid black dashed line, and that became... You're fine. That became our assumed population projection for our discussion on future water demand for the remainder of the project. And in fact, if you notice here, this plot only goes through about 100 years from now, 2120. We found later on that we needed to extend it even further, and so, the next plot shows that line extended further with a further polynomial plot that includes all the data, the historic data and our average data extended up to 2200, which is a long time from now, but we'll see why. So, this is gonna be now our assumed future population projection for the region. And a lot of our discussion henceforth here will be based upon this. And so, the next step would be to try to tie existing water use per capita to this data to try to predict water demand into the future. And so, the next slide shows some existing water, known water use points for different years, plotted here with the historic population data. This is, basically, I've converted the population data into use in cubic feet per second and compared it to actual use based on that 150 gallons per day per capita assessment, or estimation that I gave earlier. And so, this is, we found that it's acceptable, and so, we carried this assumption through with our population plot that we made. So, the next one is basically, you go to the next one, that same population plot, but we've then converted population to water demand based on that 150 gallons per day per person. So, this going forward will be, you know, our predicted water demand for the future, which is important for some of our discussion moving forward. So, next is, that's what we think we're gonna need, here's what we think we have. And it should be stated again upfront here that this assessment was done such that the groundwater and surface water sources that we currently use, we wanted to assess how much of this, how much water these two sources can provide us without negative impact to these sources. So, what I mean by that, for groundwater, we're not gonna be mining groundwater, at least for any long period of time. What I mean by that, we're not using water faster than it's replenished. For surface water, we're not using water above what should be needed to maintain a healthy aquatic environment in the stream in Rapid Creek. And so, I'll show you how we assess those. So, I'll just stay here for a second. So, we looked through a lot of existing literature, and obviously, as we all know around here, particularly this year, and even tonight, climate plays a huge role in our water supply here. And so, if you have a wet year, we have an overabundance of water, but we have periods here where we have, you know, dry periods that, where we're at a dearth, and that's gonna be a great concern here in the rest of the, not great concern, but we have discussion here in the rest of the presentation. So, the idea here is we would then compare what we define as our usable sources of water, and then compare that to the demand curve that I showed you in a previous slide. And so, it turns out, there's one study that Long and Putnam, you can go to the next one here, Long and Putnam study, where they, for groundwater at least, looked into how much water in, basically, our study area is replenishing both the Minnalausa-Madison Aquifers, you know, on an annual basis, and they looked at periods of time back in the late '80s and early '90s and mid-'90s where they had both drought times and times that were above average precipitation. So, that allowed them to get estimates of influx during those two times, as well as an average over the entire study period, which works well as an average. And so, the next slide details that groundwater availability. And so, they stated that during these dry to wet periods, the inflow from precipitation directed at outdrops and stream flow losses in Rapid Creek, or Rapid City region, I should say, range from about 44.5 to 110 cubic feet per second. Regional outflow out of the system, mostly here up to the east of us, was about 47.5 to 59.6 cubic feet per second. And that's not counting use, which is what we want, right? And that leaves a budget, there's a typo there, I found a mistake that I made in the previous presentation, but I forgot to fix it. That should be negative 3.0, but don't worry about it, it's fine. So, that leaves a budget here of about negative 3, which means we shouldn't be using any groundwater during dry years, to about 50.4 cubic feet per second in our region. So, the, for the purposes of this study moving forward, the available groundwater for dry, average, and wet years is gonna be assumed to be zero, because of that negative value of 54. 20.8 for a dry year, or for an average year, I'm sorry, and 50.4 for a wet year. So, that's our assumed budget, and this means, again, that we are using everything available to us without negatively impacting the aquifer. Now, does it mean that this is possible? Well, that's in the discussion, because you would have to strategically place wells such that you could extract all of this water without locally negatively impacting the aquifer, so these are probably actually slight overestimations. Go to the next slide. So, surface water, this is a change from last time, if you remember, Director Coth suggested that we look into Testman and Tennant's methods for estimating proper flows for favorable habitat for aquatic life. And so, we've done that, but the starting point here is the same. We looked at the USGS stream gauge in Rapid City, and we found that the 25th, 50th, and 75th percentile flow values were those there, 43.3 cubic feet per second, 60.7 cubic feet per second, and 82.5 cubic feet per second. And so, we made the decision for our study that the 25th percentile represents, you know, kind of a dry year. 50th percentile is an average year, obviously, and then 75th would be a wet year. So, those are the numbers we decided to use. And so, Tennant and Testman suggest, well, Tennant suggests that for good survival habitat, you need to have 30% of the mean stream flow maintained in the creek, so that means we need to make sure that we always have 18.2 CFS flowing at all times. The Testman method's a little bit more complex, you look at it on a monthly basis, you look at mean monthly flows and compare them to the mean annual flows. But because our study wasn't really looking at monthly data, what we decided to do was to take the lowest appropriate flow that we could possibly have according to Testman, and that's 24.3 CFS. And then, our final value that we used for our assessment was an average of the Tennant and Testman value. So, that, so, last time we came and presented, we had just a blatant assumption that we should have 15 CFS in the stream at all times, but our new number that we're using now is 21.3. So, that means our available surface water for consumptive use has decreased slightly from the last presentation we made, and that's 22 in a dry year, 39.4 in an average year, and 61.2 in a wet year. So, now, go to the next slide, please. We have assumptions of availability from the different sources. So, if you look there on the right where the red numbers are, the total available water in what we were deeming as a dry year is 22, it's just the surface water availability, and then on average years, it's 61.2, and wet years, it's 111.6. So, now, if we take those values and we plot them on the demand curve that I showed you before, which is the next slide, it shows you kind of where we are currently. And so, I'll draw your attention at first to the three horizontal lines, those are the dry, average, and wet budgets that I mentioned in the previous slide, so obviously, the red is the dry budget, the green is the average budget, and the blue is the wet budget. And so, this, the first takeaway might be to look at the green line and say, well, on average years, we're in pretty good shape, and that's true, and we know that's true here, just based on everyday operation of the water system here. However, our ability to weather drought periods, or periods, extended periods of drought, while this, I should make the point, too, that this does not consider storage in pectola or deerfield reservoirs, nor does it consider effectively storage in the groundwater. When you overpump the groundwater, there is storage there, of course, you lower the groundwater levels, which is not what you want to do, but there is storage there, so this is not considered that. But the point I want to make is that currently, if we have an extended period of drought, we are gonna have to rely on that storage. And as population increases with time, that ability to weather those longer drought periods of drought, if they exist, or if they occur, is gonna be reduced. And so, I guess that's the point I'll make at this point. Now, a lot of things are, there's a lot of assumptions being made, your population assumptions, you know, our assumptions on surface water availability, but this is where we've arrived in our study. Yes, sir?
So, if we took your worst-case population growth assumption...
Where would it plot?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
It would, it was, that's a good question, I'd have to go back and look at that specifically.
Seems like the angle would bring it up to maybe...
Below 40, I think, would be my, just based on memory. But I could certainly look into that if you'd like.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah. You go to the next slide. So, now, the final question is, so say we have this need, and we decide that the way to fix our shortcoming, if we decide we have a shortcoming in water security, is to bring water from the Missouri River, what kinds of challenges and what types of preliminary design requirements would be required for such an undertaking? And so, the first question is, okay, we're gonna bring water from the Missouri, how do we get it here? So, the obvious thing, the obvious answer to that question is, you wanna follow existing public rights of way, most likely along highways in their states. Now, certainly, you could use public land, and I'll show you an example of why that might be favorable here in a minute, but the challenge and the political challenge of that, and the cost of that, might be prohibitive. The other question is, how much of this future use do we want to bring? You know, obviously, an obvious partner here in this, if this was ever to be undertaken, would be the city of Rapid City, and perhaps this new other water district that we just identified earlier. And so, depending upon how much volume you want to bring, that drastically changes the scope of the project as far as the size of pipe and the pump design, and potentially pump station locations and reservoir that you might need, all that kind of stuff. So, we, what we did so far is we said, well, we're just gonna assess first the entirety of the West Dakota permit, and see what types of design specifications that would require. In the draft report, which I think you guys were hopefully given, we detailed the method by which that's done, and it could be redone for any flow or any, you know, size of... of allotment that we want to investigate. So what you have to deal with, with these pump stations, is you want to know what is your head loss? And so head is the pressure, basically, and there's many things that, that impact the pressure in a pipeline. Obviously, elevation's a major one, but for a pipeline of this length and this size, friction loss in a pipe, in the pipe is, is actually larger than the, the elevation head we have to overcome for this project. And also, you have things that, so we call that friction loss, by the way. And we also have minor losses, which are related to fittings in the pipe, corners in the pipe, valves you have to navigate through. All this stuff puts a resistance on flow. So what we did, let's see, you can go to the next slide. So let's look at alignments first. It's hard to see the green line on there, I apologize. Oh, another, scared me there for a minute. So these are our three, I won't say proposed, but logical alignments. Well, two of them are logical, one of them's a little bit of a pie in the sky, I'll tell you why in a minute. So the red one and the green, or the red and the blue ones, they follow existing highways, those of us that are good, here we know. The green one, we've added since last time, and that one effectively takes advantage of favorable topography. And so if you look at the profiles up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see how the green line does a couple of things. It's shorter, it's not a bunch of bright angles as the highways are. But also, you don't have as many major dips and valleys and things to navigate through, so you, you know, less of an issue there. Of course, there's nothing we can do to get around the Cheyenne River, so that's still one of those, those big dips up there in the right-hand side of those curves. So on the left side, that's Oahu, on the right-hand side is obviously our destination here. The most likely route, and the one that we assessed for our preliminary design, is the red one. It's the shorter of the two interstate ones. You know, certainly, if this were to ever be undertaken, you'd want to investigate the possibility of taking advantage of private lands to shorten it, but it's likely that any kind of easement purchase, or I, this is my own personal opinion now, any kind of easement purchase might outweigh the extra cost of just running it along an interstate or a highway. So the red line is the one that we're going to be discussing here as we go further. So let's go to the next slide, please. So I, I alluded to these numbers previously, but it turns out that this type of a pipeline along, with, with a two-foot diameter pipe, which is what we'd need to, to, to convey ten thousand acre-feet of water per year at about four and a half feet per second, four point four is actually what a design spec is, you have a total of about four hundred, or forty-four hundred feet of head loss, and only sixteen hundred roughly of that is from elevation, the rest of it's from friction and, I should be head loss, sorry about the typo there, the minor losses. And so, again, we did a preliminary assessment of a, a pipeline that would just carry the West Dakota lot. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here's some of the specs for that, I think I mentioned a couple already. So we, our student looked and inspected a pump, this is a Gorman interrupt, six-five-zero-six C dash B dash one pump, and I'm sorry you can't see that well, but the, the pump curve there, what it allows you to do, is my laser here, some of the worst ones on the screen. So this is, right here, this is your flow volume, and this is your head pressure that it, that it will pump at. So this is your efficiency curve. So to be maximum efficiency, you want to put a point kind of over on this side of the curve. So what that means is we wind up with about twenty-two hundred gallons per minute per pump with a pressure head of two hundred and sixty-three feet. Now, there's different pumps, you could spec a different pump, and those numbers would differ. And so for our purposes of this initial assessment here, ten thousand acre-feet, it would require a two, a two-foot diameter pipeline, and if you, if you've looked at the draft report, there's a figure in there, I believe it's figure eleven, that shows the different sized pipelines that would be required for different velocities of interest and, and flow volumes of interest. So this is, this one falls right on the gray line on that plot, if you're looking at it. Anyway, so two feet, two-foot diameter pipe with a velocity of four, four point four feet per second. And so this particular setup would require seventeen pump stations. And the way you determine this is you, if you look through the report, there's three equations that are used to calculate your, your friction and your head losses and your, and your minor losses. And so you do, what we did is we created a spreadsheet that had a calculation of cumulative head loss based on both the elevation, or all, the elevation, the friction loss, and the minor losses every thirty meters. And so as you, as you work your way down the pipeline, friction loss and head loss accumulates, and so you want to make sure you, you maintain positive head pressure, so this value becomes very important. And so that's how you decide where you're going to place the pump stations. And of course, yeah, those could be moved, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to mention, just in case you guys did see it, you have a copy of the report.
That's the presentation.
In addition to the slides.
Oh, yeah, towards the back, there you go. So seventeen pump stations. And so the places that they fell, based on the head loss, are, are located on the next slide here. So these are where the pump stations would be for that particular configuration. And, you know, in areas where you see longer spacings between the, the pump station locations, that's because that's flatter terrain, so you're not having to overcome as much of the elevation head loss. And so to put these on the, the profile, the next slide shows the profile. So again, you see that there, this black dot represents the, the preliminary pump station locations for that particular flow and, and pipe spec. Better wait one more hour. So I'll be done just before that, I promise. Other things that were still, that, that need to be considered, so say you go, so go to the next slide, other considerations that would have to be undertaken, so it's likely you're going to have to break pressure, maybe even at every pump station. So that can be done with tanks, it can be done with surface reservoirs, buried reservoirs, you know, underground tanks, whatever it might be, that would have to be assessed. Once you get all that water here, you can't just plug it into the supply of the city, because if you have a constant flow of water, it's got to go somewhere, so we need somewhere to put it. So it's likely you would need some kind of a major storage reservoir here. You know, I did mention in the report, the Brennan Reservoir, which was proposed several decades ago out by Farmingdale, that was a rather large reservoir, I think it had a full capacity of one hundred and forty-seven thousand acre-feet. Obviously, it wasn't built, but something like that, you know, might be useful. And you could also have a discussion as well, separate from this, that something like that might also help solve this problem. Water quality, you have water quality coming out of Oahu, water quality at the end of the pipeline, are they, are they okay for consumption? What is the, the impact the water quality has on the degradation of the pipeline? Those are all important, depending on what type of pipeline spec. So other, go to the next slide, please. Other potential sources in the area that we wanted to look into, obvious, an obvious one is the Cheyenne River. It turns out that currently, Angostura and the Cheyenne River is fully allocated for, to the Angostura irrigation district, so there'd have to be some major maneuvering to take advantage of any of that water. Certainly, as we grow, we could reach further away from, from Rapid City and Western Huntington County to other surface watersheds and access more of the aquifer systems further from town or further from our, you know, nucleus of population. However, it's likely that as population persists and continues to grow, those sources and those resources would be allocated to, to local developments, so maybe not a reliable source. So, some conclusions here. Based on what I've showed you here, shown you here, the, the current use and projected, projected demands, the region's ability to provide water during drought conditions without utilizing surface water and groundwater storage is limited and will worsen as population increases. Our projections suggest that even during an average year, demand will surpass supply in twenty-one-twenty. That seems like a long time from now, but projects like this take time, because certainly it would take a hundred years probably, but it's important to start thinking about. So even on average, we're going to need water within a hundred years here in Rapid City. It's possible that future use permits on the Rapid, on, on Missouri River could play a role in helping with this problem, or with this future issue. So they should be retained, that's our recommendation, that they should be retained, it's a nominal feat to do so, so it's, I think it's worth continuing that. While it would be greatly expensive, we'll talk about the cost here a little more in a second, and challenging, feasible, it's feasible engineering-wise, it's feasible to get, to get water here, and, and could be done in the future, it'd be a big effort and be expensive. So the next step here, things that we're still working on, the civil engineering student and Dr. Penner are working with a contractor that they've used for other things to try to get some estimates of cost for pumps, for pipe, and for excavation and installation of the pipeline. I had an email from Director Jovick this morning that suggested he would like to see this expanded greatly for the full allocation of both West Dakota and Rapid City, and we can certainly do that, and so we could try to get estimates for costs for multiple sizes of pipelines and volumes and capacities. We're also looking into, there's a study going on with a master student here on campus currently, she's working to, to better kind of model the, the use of surface water resources here in Pactola and Deerfield. Obviously, those are going to play, and they do play a huge role currently in moderating the effects of the drought. And so we'll try to put some of that into some of our discussion on this current state of, of drought tolerance and potential near-future state of drought tolerance. So that's kind of where we are now. We expect to have this hopefully completed in the next couple of months, and we'll have a final report, I think we're scheduled in November, is that true? Do you remember?
Well, we were going to discuss that.
Oh, okay.
I, I guess the choice was either October or November, so do you want to go through November?
Okay, I mean, that would probably be best, I think, in case we're still wrapping things up.
Okay.
So we can certainly have discussions on your way.
For as a board, I guess, to...
What is it officially right now?
What is what officially?
The, the completion date.
Uh, the contract, I think officially now ends November thirtieth.
Yeah, good. So, I believe so.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you flip back to the map with the pumps? Yes. Now, is our allotment restricted to where it comes out of Lake Oahu?
No, that, that's a good question. The reason we chose that was because there is an existing roadway to that spot.
Okay, is there no country roads to the east, to the west?
It's possible, that little arm that goes to the western. In fact, if, if we go back to the other map, when I, when I did my private allotment or alignment, that one pulls off of that little arm there. So that's a good question.
Yeah, we might be able to get rid of a pump station.
Absolutely, and some distance.
Right.
So this, these are all things that, you know, it's...
Not a lot, but getting rid of a pump station, that's kind of a big deal.
There'll be years of work just to establish the alignment, you know what I mean, if this were to happen. So we're making some assumptions, that's a great question and a good comment. And you could even go up to the major arm way up to the north, and you could get above the Cheyenne River. You know, that could be muddier water, so these are all discussions that could be had.
But if it's going through, like, a reservoir, or settles, it cleans out itself.
But you got to get it through a pipeline, you don't want a bunch of silicate going through a pipeline.
Right.
Yes, sir?
On the pumps here...
Yeah.
I'm wondering about the electrical power that will be required. I assume these are pretty hefty three-phase motors, and if that's a consideration, you can choose it your own.
Yeah, you know, all of these things would have to be considered. I mean, at some point, you have to decide what's in the scope of, you know, a little project like this, but those are all important considerations, obviously.
And you, you mentioned the DELE department might help you with that.
Did we?
Putting in a plug there, but...
Oh.
DELE department.
Oh.
You mentioned breaking pressure, so you're essentially...
So basically, imagine you're, you're at the end of a, of a run from a pump, and you, you want to boost it, well, you wind up with a, like, almost a cavitation there if you don't, if you don't allow that water to flow into another something and then pump it out of it.
Okay. So each one of the pump stations would have...
Potentially, yeah, yep.
So I assume you're losing, you're throwing away energy then to do that, because you're...
Well, it would be minimal, but yeah, you would be, I obviously have to, you'd have to. Yeah, you want to try to design it such that your head pressure is, is close to zero, but not zero, when you get to the pump station.
Otherwise, you'd blow your pump a little fast.
Have you guys looked at Web and Listen Clark for ideas to do the, what would work best for the financial aspect?
Yeah, so the, to be honest, the most, the, the direct corollary for something like this, particularly if we decide to go with a larger pipe, is the, the project, the name is escaping me now, it's in my record, the one up the eastern North Dakota.
The nation, oh.
What's it called? Red River, it's kind of more, it's, it's, yeah, it's up there.
I think it's West East Pipeline.
Yeah, it's, but it's, it's actually similar in length, and if we went with the whole shebang, it'd be similar in, in capacity. And they're looking at, I think, the latest, the best I saw for that was one point two billion. Okay.
Yeah. So, just to clarify, one of the things that we discussed, or that I mentioned more than once at the beginning of this, was that, you know, I don't know how involved you were at the beginning, because I know Dr. Listenby was here, and he was part of that, but I was trying to get a product here that could be used by decision-makers as they're looking at trying to get water out here from the Missouri River. And decision-makers, you know, they're the people who executive summaries are written for, right? It's kind of short and sweet, and I, I kind of wanted to see something that would show cost versus amount of water pumped or amount of water delivered, you know? So...
Well, I mean, we could certainly, you know, with the costs that we're going to try to come up with, we could certainly do that. I, I should caution you, though, that without a full-scale design, it's going to be broad, broad brush.
Yeah, there, well, and that's, that's right.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of stuff, and you can just, you know, indicate the things, you know, like, we are not including the cost of easements along the routing and so forth. But, you know, there's material costs, pumping costs...
Operation costs.
Yep, O and M cost. So that kind of stuff, I think, could be broad-brushed, at least to the point where decision-makers can see the orders of magnitude associated with these different things. So...
Yeah, we, we can certainly...
That was my goal in this.
And there's still time to do that.
So the way I look at, at the report that you've got, I think it's very well done. I think it's very heavy on the geology side and light on the civil engineering side, and that's one of the reasons I was asking Mr. Anderson what his background was, yeah. So from my perspective as a civil engineer, that's what I'd like to see fleshed out more.
Sure, but that's, and that's what's left to be done.
Yeah.
That's what we're working on currently.
Yeah.
Yep.
So does that mean you'd intend on looking at the power consumption, electrical power consumption?
Well, you know, we could, I mean, we could certainly look into that, you know, but the pumps are going to have specs on power consumption based on RPMs and efficiencies. And so, again, it's going to be broad brush, but, but it can, it can be done.
If you know the, the numbers of pumps...
Yeah, which we do.
And their sizes, you know, and you have that for different...
Station. Yeah, I, I think I, I'm sorry, anyone can add to you.
Well, and different pumping capacities, too. So I think what you've got, you've got basically one option, which is the option to satisfy the West Dakota allocation, and, you know, if you can increase that to the Rapid City, I, I think it'd be a great idea, since that West River, whatever, that other one is on there, to include up to that allocation of all three.
Would be a big part.
It would be, but, but it's worth looking at, yeah.
It's about, it's, it's about, depends how fast you want the flow.
Yeah.
And it'd be more than the flow of average flow in Rapid Creek.
Yeah. Six feet.
So I put the numbers to it one day, and ten thousand acre-feet is almost exactly what Rapid City used last year.
A little less, but yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a lot of water.
Yeah.
And if they've got, if we've got ten, they've got sixty-six.
Yeah.
And then the southern West River has ten. I made it. If we, if we were able to get all that water up here, we would never have water issues.
Yeah, but with that, that statement means that it might be...
Not for another hundred years, not for another hundred years, anyway.
But I'm with you, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess I just want to say, I think it's a well-written more than I read it last night, and I think you read easily, well, nicely, I thought.
Concise, hopefully.
And he didn't have to finish it in the morning.
No cramming. No cramming.